Good evening, Kami. Welcome to a 6:30 very special city council meeting. The piece of business that we're going to take care of right here in the special meeting is the appointment of an interim city administrator. A couple of weeks ago, council directed myself, in conjunction with our city attorney, to go and begin the process of doing that. And we brought back, went and talked with, tried to reach out to a couple of people and ended up with, I think, somebody that will help lead us through the next phase here for a little while, in Eileen Stein. And so I'm here to hopefully get a motion to appoint Eileen Stein as our new city for our interim city administrator.
If you're just looking for a motion, Mr. Mayor, I'd move to appoint Eileen Stein as interim city administrator.
And that was second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Why do you always look at me?
You're the most...
I'm a chatty guy.
And the only one that says nay to a...
Just you wait through the next section of this meeting because you're green lighted.
Actually, you just...
You're green lighted.
I do have my button on.
Oh, man. That's why I even asked. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Well, thank you very much. Eileen, welcome to the city of Kami.
And suddenly, Eileen is reconsidering.
All right.
And we have negotiated terms, and so she's ready to sign this contract right now. So she will even be joining us for our very next meeting.
Perfect.
Excellent.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. Is this an official adjournment or just a pause?
You could recess.
All right. Well, then I will recess our city council meeting until seven o'clock. So please tune back in or watch us...
Or watch the screen that has the...
The screen, yeah.
From the building on it.
Thank you, Kami.
Recording stopped. [audio cuts out] [audio cuts out]
You're in person, we're in person. So, yeah.
Recording in progress.
Your Honor, Golden State is ready and also for the U R A meeting. I told Eric, I told him that he's in his office actually working, so Jeff can let him know. Let's go to him to be able to meet so he can come down and kind of... Okay, perfect. Okay, I just want to make sure he communicates back because he's at the ready up at his office. But he didn't even talk to him on his way.
Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the May seventeenth regular city council meeting. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please. Jeremy, Father, I thank you so much for this great community, this beautiful weather that we have had, and all the things that make this community great. I want to thank you for our first responders in putting them in defense of our city. Please bring them home safely every night to their families and loved ones. I ask that you provide wisdom, discernment, and compassion with the leaders in our community, both here on the dais and throughout. I ask these things in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move into proclamations this evening, I want to take a moment and introduce everyone to Eileen Stein. She is our new, she's our interim city administrator here for the, well, for could be a little while. But we're glad that you're here and welcome to your first Camby City Council meeting. And councillors, please be nice. So the first proclamation that I have this evening is for the two thousand twenty-three National Police Week. So this proclamation, say that twice, proclamation declaring the week of May fourteenth to May twentieth, twenty twenty-three as National Police Week. Whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls is as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Camby Police Department play a central role in protecting and safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the Camby community. And whereas it is important that all residents and visitors know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices made by the members of the City of Camby Police Department. And whereas the City Council of the City of Camby gratefully thanks the men and women of the Camby Police Department who continue to choose to serve and protect our residents, businesses, and visitors. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Camby hereby proclaims May fourteenth to the, to May twentieth, twenty twenty-three as National Police Week. And further extends our appreciation and support to Chief George Trow and all members of the City of Camby's Police Department for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication and service to the community. Given unto my hand the seventeenth day of May, twenty twenty-three, in the City of Camby, Oregon.
Thank you, Mayor, we appreciate it. Thank you, councillors.
Yeah. Want to say a few words?
I'll say, yes. Thank you, this is a great community to work in. We have great support from our citizens, great support from the council. But really, it's the men and women of the Camby Police Department that keep our city safe. There was going to be a few more coming, but they're all going to call. So the ones that can't come, shout out. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, officers. The second proclamation is declaring the week of May twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability in resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Camby. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas it is the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children in Camby to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-three marks the sixty-third Annual National Public Work Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. But now, therefore, I, Brian Hudson, do hereby proclaim and designate the week of twenty, May twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, as National Public Works Week. And urge all residents to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Given unto my hand the seventeenth day of May, twenty twenty-three, in the City of Camby, Oregon. And then I believe Jeff is here to accept this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, appreciate it. Want to say a few words?
Just thank you, Mayor and council, for taking the time to recognize us. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes and stuff that doesn't show exactly. So we appreciate this.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, guys.
It's, it's nice, and I think it's important that we do these proclamations, especially for our different departments in the city. And I know that our, our police officers, both, I mean, throughout the department, do a tremendous job in keeping Camby safe. We have been, as long as I've been mayor, we have been one of the top ten safest cities in the state of Oregon. And I attribute that to the men and women of Camby P D. So I really do appreciate that. And Jeff, please take back to the rest of the public works team our appreciation. It's not always, it's not always a lot of thanks in the job. It's often very dirty and very messy. But like the proclamation says, somebody's got to help keep the lights on and the water flowing when I turn on that light switch and turn on the faucet in the morning. So I really do appreciate our public works team and all the things that they do. So thank you to them, please share that. Thanks. And Joe and I were just talking today. We'll figure out, we'll bring donuts to the police department and we'll do something nicer for public works. I'm just kidding, you guys. But thank you, well, I thank all of you for the hard work you do to keep Camby a great city. So thank you. Next up on the agenda this evening is the citizen input and community announcement. So this is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. If you are interested in addressing the council here personally, on the back podium are these great little yellow cards that you can fill out and give them to Maya, our city recorder, she'll make sure I get it. And we'll give you your three minutes of time. If you need to use more than three minutes, then please, you know, have someone buy time and to go over that time limit. If you are wanting to zoom in to give a community announcement, please let the city recorder know before, usually four o'clock or four thirty on the day of the city council meeting, and we'll make sure that you're teed up to be able to do that. Do we have anyone on line that's willing to address? No, okay. I have two comment cards, and our first one is... Thank you, sir. Paul, you live in his locker. I know, and he's saying into my ear over here, Paul. You know, and he wants to talk about high school fireworks.
Yes.
Come on up, sir.
Thank you. Seriously, Paul is fine. I don't even know if I'm saying my name right.
Well, thanks for being here.
I'm going to be nice tonight because this is your first night. There's really kind of an underlying problem with the way these fireworks are being done via the school. The, oh, let me get my head around all of this. Their, their core value statements, I'm doing this definition, I've provided them before. And this is just for the sake of this little diatribe you're going to hear. Truth from, this is definitions provided by Merriam-Webster's Collegiate Dictionary. Truth, the state of being, the case, fact, the body of real things, events, and facts, actuality. Lie, a untrue or inaccurate statement that may or may not be believed true by the speaker, something that misleads or deceives. Following is the core value statement of the Camby School District. Camby School District shall promote non-discrimination in an environment free of harassment based on an individual's race, color, religion, gender, sexual orientation, national origin, disability, marital status, or age in its programs and activities. Programs and activities, an important part here. This is a fact. Camby High School is the only school out of the eight or nine schools to use explosive devices. Camby High School varsity football team is the only team that has explosives. Excuse me, that has explosive devices at their games. Please consider the following questions. What is the gender of the varsity football team? Why does the Camby School District, excuse me, I've lost my place again. I might run over a little. Okay. Why does the Camby School District regarding the explosive devices discriminate against the other schools, the other teams, and especially the other teams that represent Camby High School? What is the gender of some of these teams? Why do you think you can disrupt our neighborhood with the use of explosive devices and not the other neighborhoods within school zones? That is not inclusive or equitable. This is discrimination, abusive behavior, and harassment to us as well as our pets that creates distress because of your program and activity. Some members of the City Council endorse specific candidates for the school board. I'm asking for your endorsement as well as the rest of the city council members to end the explosions at the Camby High School football games. I'm paraphrasing the city council, and I'm going to be nice to you guys today. The city council values and goals: honesty, ethics, accountability, adhere to high standards, ethical conduct, inclusive community, exceptional service, and improve the quality of life of our citizens. I'm asking you to consider your core values and goals. The answer is obvious. This should no longer be tolerated, ignored, or rewarded. And you guys are appreciated, by the way. So thank you all.
Yeah, Paul, thank you so much for being here tonight. I really do appreciate it. You have been heard over the last several years that you've been coming here.
Pumped me on.
I don't know if you realize this, last fall, Camby High School did not use any explosives during the football games.
No, they did.
And they actually, they did not because they, they actually no longer are able to due to the turf infield. I was speaking with Tom Scott, who's on the school board and was the one who donated the fireworks when he owned Western Fireworks. And he was telling me the reason that they stopped doing them this year was because of turfing the infield of the, the baseball fields. So they no longer have enough room for the fireworks to fall.
So we're done?
It's from my understanding...
There were none last season.
They're done. They did not use them this last fall.
Yeah.
And I was at all the games.
Our board plays, they didn't have them.
Yeah. So anyways, I, I just wanted you to know that...
Well, thank you.
So that you have that, that comfort of knowing. Tom Scott, who had donated the fireworks, is no longer donating them.
What was the fireworks? I knew I was coming, I had surgery that year.
Sure.
Laying on my couch recouping.
Yeah.
And one explosion from the football game came in, or somebody blew one off.
It may have been from somewhere else, but it wasn't, from my understanding, it was not at the football games because of turfing, of last summer, they turfed those baseball fields. And they no longer are safe to let those off, from my understanding. But I was at the games and I know that they did not let them off. So anyways, just wanted to share that with you.
So I just want to let you know, I will contact Chair Magenheimer as, as the liaison to the Camby School Board. I was going to ask if you...
Can you please turn on your microphone, Counselor Patten? Thank you.
There we go. So anyways, as the liaison to the Camby School Board, I was going to ask if you have chatted with the school board recently about this? Like, like attended a school board meeting and talked to them?
I have not because in my world, it doesn't make any sense for me to go to talk to the school board when the city council is the one that gives permission for this or not.
Okay, that's great.
But I'd be happy to talk to anybody if they're willing to listen. And these explosions don't need to happen. The kids still, that, yeah, that's proper language, they're kids.
Yeah.
They, they play, they do their games. I hear the cheering, it's great. I love it from my house.
Sure. I just want to let you know, I will reach out to Chair Magenheimer, who is the chair of the school board, and get clarification if they are or are not using the fireworks. And then communicate that back to this group, who then can get it communicated to you, whether that's happening or not, if that works.
And just as a point of, I guess, fact, I believe there was a time where they were also used at a graduation or something like that. And so you might ask if there was an intent to, maybe not do games because of the turf, but maybe if there was going to be an intent. And then we could share that with them so that you would know in advance if fireworks would be used at any other event.
And again, compromise, if, if the explosions go away at the football games because they're random, and being a person that suffers from certain things, it's just god awful. And I don't like what it does to my pet. Graduation, I can live with it because it's a specific time, it's one thing. And most of the people that go to high school might get a chance to be a graduate. Whereas the others is just specific to whether you're a team member or not. So I, I could support that. If you would do me a big favor and reach out to me as soon as possible with that language, because if it comes back negative, I'm going to keep plugging here. And then I'd really like not to.
Sure.
With the support of the council, by the way.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I was actually just going to piggyback on what Counselor Varwig said because I also attended the games, as you attended most of them as well. Because we have a boy who plays. And there is disappointment that the booms weren't happening because it is a fact that because of the new infield, they're, they're not doing them there. So they probably won't do them for graduation since it's held outside. But, but I did actually observe in my own experience some distant fireworks being held in the neighborhood. We can't control that.
Right.
Well, we can't, we can't. George, you heard that, right? Okay. So there you go. That's, that's all I can offer is there were some fireworks being done, but it wasn't on school property.
I, I have a neighborhood that's full of it on the fourth, and it's like, it's a day that I can go bury my head. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Mayor, just one more, I just asked Superintendent Aaron Downs to need to confirm that it stopped.
Okay.
Okay.
There we go.
There you go. You're off the next one.
Yay.
It's done.
It's over. Yay, thank you.
Thank you. Next person for citizen comment is Greg Perez, talking about the community.
This will be short and... Good evening, city. Good evening, city councillors and Mayor Hudson.
Say so soon.
Today, what I'm doing is I'm speaking on behalf of the community, city citizens, and that had concerns. And this has been going on for months, so it's been accumulated and I put it together. Today, I'm here because of the community questions, and they are wondering in which direction the city is going. Concerned are those in the city of Camby of what has transpired over the last six months, if not longer. Public Works has come before this board citing a hostile work environment. Other issues that have taken place in the loss is the loss of workers at the city library complaining of hostile work environment and complaints about the upper administration of not handling these situations. Questions are being asked why the city attorney is wearing two hats. They want to know if it's costing the city more money with this in place. They claim it could be a conflict of interest. The community also wants to know if all city personnel is working on premise or from home. Their concern is all department heads should be on the premise to be effective when needed. We know as a community that your volunteer positions can be tough at times. But being in a position of authority and control, there are times you have to make some tough decisions. Good leaders make tough decisions. The community states that you have to set your feelings aside and do what is good for the city... the city work environment, all city departments, and the community. Working overall as a team will direct our city to success. And I'm not questioning anything, I just want this to be on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, appreciate it. Next on the agenda this evening is approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes of the March 1st, 2023 Joint Planning Commission and City Council Work Session and regular city council meeting, and the approval of the off-premise OLCC application for King's Farm-to-table located at 241 Northwest Second Avenue.
A motion's been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Councilor Varwig to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the March 1st, 2023 Joint Planning Commission and City Council Work Session and regular council meeting, and the approval of the off-premise OLCC application for King's Farm-to-table located at 241 Northwest Second Avenue. Any discussion or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carrie's four zero tonight. Next up is resolutions and ordinances. We have quite a few of those this evening, so the first one is considering Resolution Number 1382, the adopting the revised draft park naming policy. And just not here, but Joe?
Yeah, I can handle that. I, this, this is a resolution to, for you to officially adopt the revised draft park naming policy. This got vetted through the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and they are in favor of it. And so it's now in front of you to officially adopt it so that it can be the, the new policy for when they look at naming parks.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Do you have a question? Do you want?
I have to make a motion.
Question for staff?
Not question for staff, just to comment as the Park Advisory liaison, I sat through this several times with the Park and Market Committee. They've done an excellent job on this and supported 100%. With that, I'll make the proposed motion. I move that the council approve Resolution 1382, a resolution adopting the revised park naming policy is submitted.
A motion's been made by Councilor Davis and seconded by Councilor Varwig to approve Resolution Number 1382, a resolution adopting the revised park draft naming policy as submitted. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes for zero.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for getting this on the agenda.
No, and I appreciate the Park Board understanding the, the delay and getting it there, but yes, glad to get it on there. Item B in your resolutions and ordinances is Resolution Number 1383, a resolution authorizing a rate increase and establishing a new rate schedule for garbage collection by Canby Disposal within the city of Canby. And I know we got the guys from Canby Disposal here tonight, thank you for being here. Joe?
Yeah, so this is a resolution that is in our franchise agreement for the exclusive, the exclusive franchise that K-Hoots has with the city of Canby for garbage disposal. It calls for them to come and ask for any rate increases annually to, to come in front of you guys as, as close to about May 15th as possible, so that the rates could then go up on July 1. So they are here, there is in our franchise agreement a methodology that is laid out that the gentlemen have attempted to follow. And so they are asking, it is in the franchise agreement, it's a shall, unless they're asking for a special rate increase, the adjustment that is laid out per the calculation in the franchise agreement is a shall. So if they're asking for that amount, that is something that is contracted. So, and that's the expectation on this particular item, although there are in conversations with Councilor Patton in specific, there may be some other questions that the council has, and I see Councilor Varwig also signaling. So if you want to invite the gentleman up to kind of, to talk about their proposal, and then if you have any questions for them, I will be here with the actual franchise if there's questions legally speaking.
Great, thank you.
So good evening, everyone, thank you for having us tonight. We're, as was stated, we're here asking for an annual rate increase per the franchise We've obviously experienced quite a bit of cost increases over the last year, inflationary pressures, disposal increased costs, labor costs have obviously increased so we can retain and employ good, good drivers to service the community here in Canby. So we are asking for a 6.4, 6.5% increase somewhere right in there. Any questions?
Yeah, I really appreciate you gentlemen being here, and I know you all along with, you know, your predecessors and the ownership of Canby Disposal have been very good community members and partners with the city and the community as a whole. Couple of things that had been elevated, I'm sure, you know, with, you know, ice storms and things like that, interruptions of service and things like that, and those things are gonna happen. I guess what I'm looking for from you all is maybe like some key learnings with that situation, and how in the future, you know, those can be mitigated so that, you know, I'm sure your guys' phones lit up often and frequently, you know, very much, and I know that many of us up here had, had the same or similar conversation. So, yeah, I just wanted to kind of maybe have you guys shed some light on that.
Sure, yeah, and appreciate you bringing that up. By, you know, it was a challenging winter, by, by all means, for a lot of us. And I'll be the first to say that we made a mistake and didn't operate in Canby, and we'll own that. In our industry, it's a challenging situation at times because not along the lines of is there snow in Canby, but is there snow at the disposal facilities where we, excuse me, have to take the trash to? So we did have some challenging decisions to make. I think that we, as a company, could have done better on a decision that we made in Canby not to operate when the snow wasn't in Canby. At that time, we did speak with Councilor Davis and former city administrator Scott Archer as well, met with them and talked about our, you know, our challenges, but I can say with confidence that that, you know, is not going to repeat. I appreciate you mentioning the previous ownership. We've, acquiring a company the size of K-Hoots with multiple locations and a lot of employees has been challenging, to say the least, not making excuses, but I think that's some of the reality of, of buying a business right after post-COVID. But by all means, I appreciate you bringing that up, and, and we're gonna do a better job of that going forward, especially in those snow and ice storms, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Councilor Varwig?
Yeah, thank you so much. I so appreciate you guys being here. I kind of made a tongue-in-cheek comment before you, before we started, of you guys coming in and saying it's gonna be hard, it's hard to ask for money. I get it. I'm a small business owner, I recently raised my rates, as a matter of fact, I raised them yesterday and then had to raise them again today. And that was hard, that was difficult. But you're right, costs have increased. One of the things that I have to make sure when I raise my rates is that my customer service stays at the same rate that my rates are. And I know that, you know, as you admitted to tonight, and thank you for owning that, I really do appreciate that. It's, it's a difficult thing to have to say, we messed up, but we all do it. And so hopefully, you know, this is a, a public record of you guys saying that your, your commitment to customer service will remain. You obviously had very big shoes to fill. The K-Hoots were incredible community members, and I, I don't envy you trying to take over their business and, and all that they did. And so, you know, one of the complaints that I have heard is that, you know, prior ownership, if they missed a day, everything would bump out a day, versus now it seems like if we missed a day, whoever missed Monday or Tuesday doesn't get picked up till next Monday or Tuesday. And I think our community would love to see it go back to if you miss a day, I can wait a day for my garbage to be picked up. And so if you miss a day, everybody misses a day, you know, you're a day later. So, you know, we're trying to make up some time over there. But I think that's the, the biggest complaint that I have heard this last year, and if we're going to approve a rate increase for you, I want our community to be assured that you guys understand that that's their frustration.
Definitely understand that, and do apologize, like Josh said, we definitely made a mistake. One of the things with snow and ice events, if, if we miss one day, we certainly just push everything a day and then work the following, you know, work that Saturday, so we're just a day behind the rest of the week. When we miss two days, that throws a wrench in that, that plan due to hours of service regulations, we can't work, you know, we have to have 34 hours off, like a reset period. So if we work Saturday and Sunday, we won't be able to work the Monday. So certainly, as Josh said, it won't repeat the, the way it happened last year, and we'll do better, but if, like I said, if there's a major event where there's multiple days missed, it does make it challenging to catch up everybody in that week.
Yeah, absolutely understand that. I think as a community, we were all happy to miss a couple of days, so that somebody doesn't have to miss two weeks, right? So, yeah, take care of the people who were missed, and I'll wait two days. I'm happy to wait four days.
You definitely have our commitment as a council, and.
Thank you.
Customer service is, you know, our high priority, you know, safety's the number one priority, but customer service is definitely second to that, and we, we are committing to you that we will make sure we do better going forward.
And I would just like to add one more comment. I think somebody said, commented earlier about leaders make tough decisions, and Chris and I have been in this business a long time, many years before the K-Hoot family company that we acquired, and making the decision to not operate is probably one of the hardest we do in our career. It impacts so many people, not only the community, but our team, our disposal facilities, so it is a difficult one. So we appreciate the comments and glad that we can have the discussion with the council and the community, so.
I would like to reiterate that, it's always the hardest decision ever to make, you know, we're always, we get out 2:30 in the morning, we're driving around the roads, trying to figure out, okay, can our trucks safely do this or not? And it's always a difficult decision.
I, I understand you guys, my business has trucks on the road too, so I have the same mindset as you guys, and it is very, very difficult, right? And what's even more difficult is having to have those conversations with the customers later, why? Because they don't always understand why.
Sure.
Right? And it's, you know, it's not just because my street didn't have snow or ice, doesn't mean that another person's street didn't. So, yeah, I appreciate you guys being here, thanks.
Sure.
Council President Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, I've heard very similar comments from community members, and just in addition to that frustration was that they were missed, they had to wait an extra week or some, but there was also no credit on their bill, so they paid you to come get it and you didn't. So that was kind of like the salt in the wound, they were a little frustrated by that. So if you, if you're not gonna be able to do it within a couple of days, maybe do some credit adjustments and apology would be helpful, because the community was very frustrated.
Sure, fair, understandable.
Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you guys for coming. And they did reach out to the city administrator and myself at the time that this happened and, and took full ownership of it, and I really appreciate that. I do know that you guys have a tough decision, and, but I do also appreciate you looking at safety too, because of the fact that if by chance you made a decision to drive a truck that day and it did pile into somebody, we'd be hearing that side of it too. So I think that safety is very important as well. So that, those are tough decisions. The other thing is, I appreciate how you've picked up on a lot of the activities that the K-Hoots were doing, like shredded day. And I know two years ago, we had a shredded day, and the shredded truck, the old shredded truck from K-Hoot broke down, these guys brought a truck from Vancouver to continue the shredding. So they could have very easily just stopped it at that point, but they actually brought a truck from Vancouver to, to continue with the shredding. And a great job again this year with the shredded day, so thanks for what you do.
Thank you, Councilor Davis.
Councilor Patton, you got something else?
Yes, so I echo many of the things that the other councillors have mentioned regarding the ice storm, but I would like to elaborate a little further. In your customer service, I've been a Canby Disposal customer now for 12 years, and you owned the company now for two or three years.
One and a half.
One and a half. I have got to tell you that trying to deal with your customer service is like trying to give yourself a root canal with a hand mixer. It is painful. The chatbot, which I used during the ice storm, made me want to gouge my eyes out. And then I never actually got a chance to talk to a real person a week after this whole thing happened. And then afterwards, I got an email from a representative from your company saying, oh, by the way, we're sorry, we think you may have been missed on a previous email to let you know that you can just put an extra bag of garbage out by the, your current can, and we'll pick it up during your regular pickup time. I understand that problems are gonna happen, but it makes the city look horrible, okay? I've also gotten calls from members of this community, not just about the ice storm, but about their normal pickups not occurring, and then there being delays, and those trucks coming back to empty out those cans. So in preparation for this, I've done a little research. My question to you is, did you bring a copy of your franchise agreement with you tonight?
We did not.
I have a copy of it, because I'm going to be referencing some of these pieces. Here you go.
Thank you.
So first, on page 30 of that document, it says that, "The company shall be prepared to review its operations plans with the city once annually upon a 30 days written notice requesting said review. I will be recommending at the end of this conversation that we initiate this clause in this agreement, not in an effort to try and cancel it, but in effort to try and make things better." If you go to page 41 of that document, there is a section that pertains to a contingency plan. I foresee the contingency plan being something that the city has on file that can be used in an effort to help communicate things like this when there are problems. It says, "The company shall submit to the city on or before the commencement date of the agreement, a written contingency plan demonstrating company's arrangements to provide vehicles and personnel and to maintain uninterrupted service during breakdowns and in case of natural disasters or other emergencies, not including a labor dispute, including the events described in Section 12.4." I have done some asking around the city, and it appears that there is no copy of this contingency plan on file at the city. I think it might be good, considering this original agreement was entered in in like 2010, that you folks work with the city to create a more comprehensive contingency plan for situations like this. If there is a contingency plan on file at your place, it'd be great, I think, to get it to the city, but it would, I could see where after a decade, it might be time to update that plan. Fast forwarding to page 47, actually, I'm gonna hold off on 47. We're gonna talk about company office. So on page 50, it says, this is line 21 on page 50 of that document, "Company shall have a representative answering the telephone or voicemail service available at said after-hours telephone number." I think we might need to look at that and review that, because that to me means that when I call your office, I shouldn't be getting a recorded message right during regular office hours. So I think we might need to look at updating that to make it more relevant to your, to your phone tree. Below that, it says complaint, documentation, and response. Line 52, "Company shall log all complaints received by telephone, and said log shall include the date and time the complaint was received, the name, the address, and telephone number of caller, description of complaint, employee recording complaint, and the action taken by company to respond to and remedy the complaint. All written customer complaints and inquiries shall be date stamped when received and shall be initially responded to within one business day of rece- be initially responded to within one business day of receipt." I think there, I think there's a problem there. I'm curious if you have this call log and this complaint log at your office. Do you know if you have this?
We document everything in our routing software called RMO. So as far as a actual log, I cannot say if we have that or not. But it's all documented in our system.
So to go along with that, it says, "The daily log of complaints concerning the collection of this, of solid waste and such shall be maintained for a minimum of 24 months and shall be available for view by city during business hours and at no cost." Is it possible for you to provide us with a copy of this 24 months worth of complaint log so that we can get a better understanding of how the complaints have been tracking there for you folks over the last two years?
Yeah, I think to Chris's point, you know, we document everything in our billing system. To look back beyond the date that we purchased the Kehoot Family Companies, I don't know that I can speak to that without looking and verifying first. But certainly hear your concern on the complaint log and being able to provide that per the franchise agreement.
Okay. Excellent. The next part is, do we have a do, so in here, there is a section that says, on page 51, line 22, "Upon execution of this agreement, the company shall designate in writing a government liaison who shall be the responsible, shall be responsible for working with the city administrator and/or city's designated representative." Do you have a, like, specific representative for us here or not?
Yeah, that would be me.
That's you? Okay, great. Just, we just, I think it might be good just to make sure that that is in writing now that we've had some turnover in our city administrator, that we have that on record. The next section on page 63 is regarding a performance hearing. Annually, the city may, but is not required to hold a public hearing on or about 90 day, 90 calendar days after receipt of the company's annual report. We're going to get to an annual report here in a little bit. I think, as I had said before, I think it's time that we have one of these public hearings. I think it would be good for the citizens of Canby to be able to come in and maybe express their frustrations or good experiences about the services they've gotten to you so that you have a chance to, to hear this directly from them. My other question is, are we able to compel Kehoot to do a customer satisfaction survey and provide us with the data that that survey yields?
If it's not in the contract, I believe that the contract language calls for them to not only do quarterly reports, but an annual report and as part of those to have any complaints or any lapse of services in those. So if that's an extra thing that they're willing to do, you can ask them to do it, but it's not in the contract to compel it.
Okay. I would love you, I'd love to see you do a customer service survey and get a base point of where we are at today and then see what that is in a year to see if we're making progress towards, you know, making things better for the citizens. Let me just see, 5 calendar days after receipt. Okay. So the next section is regarding these reports. Do you currently provide annual or quarterly reports to the city regarding your service?
You know, I was just thinking that as you were speaking, Counsel Patton, you know, we have not since we took over the contract.
Okay.
Do we in other municipalities and areas by all means?
Okay.
We have, so.
So with that, I will just bring your attention to page 68, line 8. It says, "Quarterly reports shall be submitted no later than 45 calendar days after the end of each quarter. Quarters end on September 30th, December 31st, March 31st, and June 30th. Annual reports should be submitted before September 30th following the end of the rate period." And I will just let you know, and I'm not asking for this to be activated, but in section on page 87, lines 1, Section D, as far as timeliness of submitting to the city these reports, for a quarterly report, for every day that the report is late being turned into the city, it is $100 a day fine. And for the annual report, it too is $100 a day fine. I would hate to have a clause like that activated because you have missed that in review of this particular franchise agreement.
I'm fairly certain we provide the quarterly reports and the annual reports as far as tonnage goes. The complaint summary, like, I'm not positive that's being done, but I'm fairly certain the quarterly reports and annual reports as far as tonnage have been submitted.
Okay.
Tonnage and revenues and, yeah, so.
So yes, I would like to see this stuff activated. I think by doing this, it is going to bring some confidence to the citizens of this community that we as a council are, have our finger on the pulse of this and that the partnership that you have had many years, your predecessors had many years here with the city continues in good standing, if that makes sense. That's all.
And if I may, Counsel Patton, I appreciate the comments and the kind of clarity of the expectations of the franchise agreement. And one thing I will say, you make fair points, especially about the call center, as well as some of the, the customer service in the field with the drivers. We, much like many companies, have really struggled with labor and staffing. You know, hiring people has been incredibly challenging lately and especially in the, in the driver and mechanic wages. So we have had our challenges, not an excuse, and nonetheless, that has definitely impacted our call volumes. We have worked quite hard to get those corrected, including hiring additional staff above our normal headcount to try to dig out of that hole. But your comments are very well heard and definitely concerning to us as a company and as leaders running the Kehoot Family Company. So I did want to mention that. And, you know, the other thing, again, I started with appreciate the clarity of the expectations. Sometimes when we take over new contracts with cities and counties who are unsure of that previous reporting or how that looked, we should have done a more thorough review of this and met with city administrators to determine what those expectations are or if there had been precedent set with submitting those in the past. So I just wanted to make those comments and again, hear your concerns and they're very valid, so.
Excellent. There was one thing I missed, just real quick. In there, it specifically mentions that the Canby Cleanup Day will be a particular time of the year. And I know, it was brought to my attention that you had come to the council before and asked for some changes to that because it makes the city look trashy and it's extremely expensive for you. I think, but it doesn't sound like that, oh, wait.
Jason, I believe that was the prior owner that did.
Oh, that was the prior owner. So let me bring it up then again. So apparently that was requested, but there was nothing really put in writing to that effect of that change of the franchise agreement. I think it might be good, while we're cracking this open and dealing with some of this stuff, that we sort of codify that language. I would ask, as someone who has tried to use this service, and some folks have shared this with me, the way the cleanup day is set up now is that you're allowed one cleanup day per year, but really it's one cleanup day per 12-month cycle. And what I would really like to see for the citizens is it changed to per calendar year. In my scenario, I was helping a neighbor deal with a fence. And so I did the first part of it in the fall and then the next spring, I did the second part of it. And then I had to get clever with using my neighbor's cleanup day because I was not allowed to use my annual cleanup day until that following fall. I think it might be nice for the citizens to be able to use, have a little more flexibility in when that cleanup day can be used. And that's the last of my comments.
I will definitely check into the timing on the cleanup days. My understanding was it was one per calendar year. And then we do the annual drop-off event. I think the contract says spring. We resumed it last year after a couple of years of not having it because of COVID and we had it in the fall. I'm certainly more than happy to have it in the spring if that's what you, what the council would like, but, you know, we did have it last November and we plan to have it this, this October again for the annual drop-off event. And I will definitely get some clarification on the personal cleanup days as far as what the timing of, of how we're administering, how we, how the customers can use it. But to my knowledge, it's, it's one every, once every calendar year.
Okay. When I called and finally got ahold of somebody in customer service to schedule it, they denied me from doing it again the next year because I had to wait 12 months, is what they told me.
Okay.
Yes. So like, I could not, because I had scheduled it in September of that year, I, the previous year, I couldn't have another cleanup day until September or later of that, of that next year.
Okay. Definitely get some clarification on that for you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Counsel.
Mayor, the, I guess the question is, is on the rate increase. I think the counsel person Patton has brought up some really good points and that might be, it might be wise to revisit the franchise and have a discussion around the franchise agreement. But tonight, we're here to talk about the rate increase, so I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. I move to adopt resolution number 1383, a resolution, a rate increase and establishing a new rate schedule for garbage collection by Canby Disposal within the city of Canby.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counsel Davis and seconded by Counsel Patton to approve resolution number 1383, a resolution authorizing a rate increase and establishing a new rate schedule for garbage collection by Canby Disposal within the city of Canby. Need a further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries 4-0. Gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening and hearing the feedback that's been presented. And I will work with city staff to discuss, you know, you know, the changes to franchise agreement and what that process would look like from our end and work with you all to make some of those pieces happen.
Yeah, thank you for having us tonight. And I'll just end with, we are committed to continuing to be a strong partner with the city of Canby. As you mentioned, big shoes to fill with the Kehoot families, but Chris and I are committed to doing that and continuous improvement. So you have our commitment that we will work through these things and address your concerns. So, thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Oh, really? Okay. No, I didn't want to be like late, like rambling all that stuff off and not having you something to go from.
Our next resolution is number 1384, a resolution adopting the updated city council goal and priorities. So back several months ago, the council did a work session, I want to say retreat because retreat usually involves sun, beaches, and food for drinks with umbrellas. So it was a work session to revamp and revisit some of our goals and objectives as a city. And we brought in a facilitator to help us get to what I think is very well fleshed out and detailed goals and whatnot that will carry us through this year and will hopefully just enable us to do some tweaks going into next year. So the, we do keep a laminated copy at each place here at the dais. And so once we approve this, we will update that copy and make sure that a freshly minted copy is here at the dais for each one of us. So any questions or comments about what's being handled here? Yes, Counsel Davis?
Yes, I fully support and, and good work by our consultant that helped us put together, nice work by the, by the council and the administration as well. Just a few questions and maybe Joe can check into this, he was here. But under goal one, I would have thought for sure that we put in there that would, the bi-monthly financial reports. I know we have the mid-year fiscal year report and budget, but I thought we also put in there, asked that the bi-monthly financial reports be put in there. But that's okay because we are receiving them, we get them, you know, but I thought we, we were going to talk about fiscal accountability or stability on this. Other than that, that's the only one I found looking through the document. Failure?
If, if, just to answer, so, because one of the things, once you guys adopt that, we, we want to make sure that we, you know, codify it and have it for you guys and for our dropdown list for staff reports and everything else. So if, if that is the majority here's desire to make sure that that's also codified on there, we can easily do that with adoption of this and just with the mindfulness of what you're saying, we can, we can put that in your goals and then they can be in front of you.
Yeah.
Because they're your goals and we want, we want to do what you guys want to get done.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Sounds like there's an affirmative to add that in.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
No, I know, it's, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to pass resolution 1384, a resolution adopting the updated city council goals with the addition of fiscal responsibility as one of the goals.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Patton. Motion has been made for, to pass resolution 1384, a resolution adopting the updated city council goals as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next up is ordinance number 1598, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to amend the contract with First Transit Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, increasing service hours to expand the Canby Loop and provide both first and second liability insurance. Mr. Lindsay, and I know Mr. Woods is here to enlighten us as well, because you know how much I love when staff is here that I can have them come up front and do their presentation.
What up, Todd?
Every council's got their thing. Jason is exhaustive with, you know, franchise agreements.
I'm afraid to sit here with the contract.
I had fun digging into that.
I bet you did.
I'm going to have to start doing this more often.
Do you have my contract sitting there as well?
I have not done.
I bet you Todd's got a few transit contracts to dig into.
Just dig through that.
I put you on the spot with the size of the buses last time, so I've given you a pass this time.
So this is just the second reading. Again, the CIS decided that they would no longer cover a contractor operating any of the city vehicles unless, we had to get second, first liability from contractor, which means we pay the contractor for the insurance. So sort of a roundabout way of doing the same thing. And then the other is the expansion of the Canby Loop. Our current contract, of course, has a set number of hours and not to exceed amounts and the Canby Loop adds additional hours and additional not to exceed amount for Saturday, which will begin in September. So this just amends that contract to allow us to do those things.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 1598, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to amend the contract with First Transit Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, increasing service hours to expand the Canby Loop and provide both first and second liability insurances.
Motion has been made by Counsel President Hensley and seconded by Counsel Farwick to adopt ordinance 1598, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to amend the contract with First Transit Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, increasing service hours to expand the Canby Loop and provide both first and second liability insurance. Roll call, vote.
This time, I'm not ready. All right. Counselor Patton?
Aye.
Counselor Farwick?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
And Counsel President Hensley?
Aye.
All right. Motion passed, it's 4-0. Thank you. Thanks for being here, I appreciate it. Next up is ordinance number 1599, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to expand payment to city county insurance services, CIS, in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for liability insurance coverage for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Also a second reading. Mr. Lindsay?
Yeah. Well, I, so last, last, at first reading, there was a sort of promise that I was going to meet with the insurance person and get the actual price. And when I met with said person, they still need us to verify all of the property and all of the fleet and everything, what we're still, what we still own, what, you know, so we're, we're trying to do all that bookkeeping until we get the absolute price. So I don't, do not, sorry, have the absolute price. So the not to exceed number is still good. sorry, have the absolute price. So the not to exceed number is still good. What I will say is I made sure and got the percentages and they said, they, across the board, were claiming that all of the property that any of their members own was going to go up automatically 7% because of inflation. So that's a number that we're, we can sure, sure count on because it's going to cost 7% more to insure that. And then the other big piece was that for liability, it seems like the, the number was going to be 9%. That, that's where it was landing. So together, that's approximately, I think 16% is what we're probably looking at. But those were kind of the, the quick numbers that they were talking about of, of how much it costs for us to have insurance, which it costs more to not have it. So.
True. Great. Councilor Patton, do you have a question or comment?
I was just, I was gonna make the motion. It's all right.
Please.
Okay. I move to adopt ordinance number 1599, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expend payment to city country insurance services, CIS, in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for liability insurance coverage for fiscal year 2023, 2024, on second reading with a roll call vote.
I will second and have a question slash comment.
Okay. Motion's been made by Council Patton and seconded by Council Varwig to approve ordinance number 1599, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expend payment to city county insurance services, CIS, in amount not to exceed $500,000 for liability insurance covered for fiscal year 2023. Discussion item?
Yeah. I guess this is a question for Joe. Is it important in our motions to have the tag of the interim city administrator?
It's not essential because it's like, and I know that some, some of these have it and some of them don't. But no, that, the notion is she's sitting in the position of city administrator.
Wonderful.
The interim is just what, you know, kind of the temporary nature of it, but.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure that we were good to.
She's given all the powers of, of the city administrator.
Perfect. Good to know. Thank you.
Good question. Follow up question regarding the amount being 500,000?
Um, yeah.
So not to exceed that?
Yeah.
And so we're projecting that it's not going to go over that?
Yeah.
However?
Yeah.
If that were to happen, then we basically have to bring this back to us?
Yeah. It could appear in a form of a, a, well, we can amend a contract up to 25% legally. But the, so, so that can happen. But then you would also see it as a form of a supplemental budget eventually, because it would be a bigger expenditure than, if that makes sense.
Nope, it does.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
So roll call vote.
Counselor Patton?
Aye.
Counselor Varwig?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
And Council President Hensley?
Aye.
Passes four zero. Ordinance number 1600, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expend payment to SAFE Corporation in the amount not to exceed $94,274 for workers' comp coverage for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Also up for second reading. Mr. Lindsay?
And this is our second part of our insurance, which is our workers' comp. So CIS stopped doing this a few years ago, so we had to go with SAFE. This is a hard and fast number that they've given us. The, on the back end, at the end of the year, if all of their members have had less claims, then, that we actually usually get a discount on the next year. So this, this is the, the worst news in a conservative estimate, but that's what we'll pay upfront in order to get savings. And then they, they might give us a discount if, if their members are safer next year.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Questions?
Joe, do we know what our insurance mod is for, our insurance mod from the insurance company? In other words, how did we do last year and how are we doing this year to establish our rate?
We, yeah, we, we are doing well. We had some workers' comp claims this year, a couple of them. But we historically have done pretty darn well. And I, I don't believe, this, this doesn't show that it raised any particular amount due to that.
Okay.
The, what happens is we are charged per hour per type of job. So if we add another officer, it actually is more, that's a more liability intensive. So, so we have gone up a little bit because of the type of work that we've added.
Right.
But, but it hasn't, we haven't been penalized for.
Injuries or anything.
Yeah, how injurious we've been.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Joe?
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 1600, an ordinance authorizing
the city administrator to expand payment to SAFE Corporation in the amount of $94,274 for workers' comp coverage for fiscal year 23, 24.
I'll second. Motion has been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Council Varwig to approve ordinance number 1600, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to expend payment to SAFE Corporation in the amount of $94,274 for workers' comp coverage for fiscal year 2023. And that is for a second reading. Any other discussion?
This is a first reading.
No?
Yeah, second reading.
Second reading. We'll roll call vote.
Sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion? The only comment I will make is that I'm glad that somebody made a motion, because if we deny it, there's a lapse in coverage until we find another one. So that really does create a problem. So thank you for Council President Hensley and Varwig making the motion and seconding. I don't want to gap in our, our insurance. So.
No, no, we don't have that.
Roll call vote, Maya?
Counselor Patton?
Aye.
Counselor Varwig?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
And Council President Hensley?
Aye.
Great. Our next ordinance this evening is number 1601, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a six-month service agreement with Janne King for $52,860. And this is the first reading of this ordinance.
This is the first reading.
There you go. Mr. Lindsay?
Yeah. So the, kind of the history of this is we, we've been with Janne King for the about last six months. They were a contractor we found because the city suddenly found itself in need because of a matriculation of, of one employee. And then the other one actually got hired on, in a different capacity. And so this was somebody that in a stopgap moment, we had to contract out. We are pleased with the service as a city. And so we are, now we, we've gotten three bids to extend that service for another six months so that we can go up for a full RFP. So under Oregon law, we, if it's over 150,000, then we have to go up for a full RFP. And so we, we, what we're trying to do is we did another smaller procurement at this level. We have to come to you because it's over, technically over 50,000. The, the original one wasn't, and so that's why you didn't necessarily see that. But this one is, and it's just as well to see it so that we can tell you that our intention is if, if we seal this up for the next six months, we will use that time to go up for a full RFP so that we can have a, a longer term, you know, continuity in our contracting for this service. But we have gotten the three quotes according to Oregon law. We're just asking that we allow, you allow for this level of expenditure so that we can get our ducks in a row to, to have an even longer contract with whoever prevails in that process.
So in, just as a history piece, this was done in-house prior and then?
Okay. We had a, we had a long time contractor who wanted to sail off into retirement that we had contracted with. And he had been here long enough that part of the council was asking us to go through an RFP process. In that process, there was a proposal to actually do it in-house. So the reason we're back here now is because that, because of the personnel, it became an, an urgency that then has actually worked out. So, so that's why we're here, where we're at.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Davis?
Joe, for us new people, what's this for? What service?
Oh, this is for the janitorial service.
Okay.
So it cleans all of our facilities.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve ordinance number 1601, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a six-month service agreement with Janne King for $52,860 to come up for second reading on June 7th, 2023.
Second.
Motion has been made by Council Patton, seconded by Council President Hensley to approve ordinance 1601, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a six-month service agreement with Janne King for $52,860 to come up for second reading on June 7th of 2023. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes four zero. Last ordinance of the evening is ordinance number 61602, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to approve a 60-month agreement with Directlink for the city of Canby to come up for second reading on June 7th.
And I can speak to this one as well, Your Honor. The, so we have, have a longstanding relationship with Directlink, who used to be Canby Tel. And so they, they have provided us our internet and our phones for a long time. We are happy with their service. When we looked to extend this for five years, we did the public procurement process. We got two other quotes. And price isn't the only thing, but this, we actually are ending up getting a good deal here. And we, I believe are getting some new phones through it as well. And then this is one of those situations where continuity of service is actually really important too. So we're, we're kind of putting that all together in a package where it's, it comes in under $100,000 for the five years. So we're at the intermediate procurement process. And so we did get those two other quotes, but we are just asking that we're sticking with Directlink at a good price.
Perfect. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. So if I'm looking at this correctly, so we were paying 33,000 and now we're getting paid 19,000. So is this a cost savings?
Yeah. I, I believe that it, there is some cost savings. I think there was some negotiating around the type of service and the phone service and the internet service. So.
So is our, do we know if our service is going to remain as good or better than what we had?
I believe it should be as good or better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1602, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to approve a 60-month agreement with Directlink for the city of Canby to come up for a second reading on June 7th, 2023.
Second. Motion has been made by Council Varwig and then seconded by Councilor Davis to approve number, ordinance number 1602, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to approve a 60-month agreement with Directlink for the city of Canby to come up for a second reading on June 7th, 2023. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that passes four zero. Next on the agenda is, we have a couple of new business items. The first one is the discussion regarding sole source outdoor fitness court. And I'll let Mr. Lindsay fill us in on that.
Okay. So this is in front of the council because it's really is a, a public contracting question, but it's one of what the council is willing to find. That, so, so this is the, the court, sport court or fitness court that came in front of you a few months back. And there was a grant that was sought, that some, some people were calling it a discount. But that, this was part of the, the National Fitness Coalition. And so this, this is an apparatus that has appeared in other Oregon towns. And those towns have gone through a public procurement process that found that this was a sole source of this particular type of purchase. Now, under public contracting law, if you are over $150,000, you have to go out for an RFP. And so unless there's a sole source, meaning this is the only person that sells this very particularized thing. So, right, a, a good example would be a, a very specialized sports car that's only, there's one of them around, right? And so that would be the only particular car that you could ever buy. So you can't ask around for those other sports cars to see how much they cost because there's only one. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, so this is, in order to use sole source, the council has to find in advance of, of using that, that it is indeed the sole thing being sold. And so the, the company itself puts together a list of why they think they are a sole source, because they are using conjunction with this specialty app that then it's, you know, it's, it's the same as all of the others.
Tracking every move.
Yeah. Well, there's that. But then also that you can go to other member cities and use their same exact apparatus in the same exact way. I, I guess the question is, do you guys find, and, and it really is whether the council wants to find this or not, in, in an ordinance, in order to do this expenditure, using a sole source theory, is that would you find that really this is the only, you know, or, or do you have an appetite to at least have us try to present to you a sole source theory versus going out for an actual RFP to do this? Because if, if, if there isn't an appetite to at least hear that argument, then we would have to go out because it's going to be $175,000 expense. So we just wanted to get that answer from, from the council. So if, if people are really saying, yeah, we think that there's enough justification that this sort of equipment is so particularized that it's the only way to get it, then if you are, you're willing to do that, we could, we can publicly contract that. If you're not willing to have that, I guess, or entertain that argument, then we would just go out for an RFP to make sure that we're doing the correct procurement process.
Okay. So just so I understand the question, either treat this as a sole source, yes, sole sourcing, which means, and you gotta do your homework to figure out if in fact.
You have to justify it to you guys.
Yes. Or go out and do an RFP for however many days, open that up.
Yeah.
And it very well could be this is the only company that puts in for that. But we then did our due diligence in, in that regards.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I will say that I believe both Westland and Albany used the sole source justification. But I just, it is a policy question really, because you guys have to find that it was a sole source in order to, to use that under Oregon procurement law.
Got it. Yes, Councilor Davis?
Joe, are you comfortable with recommending a sole source on this?
I, I could bring, they put together their arguments and because sister cities have also done that. And, and because there is, there is uniqueness to what they are selling. If, if the council wants me to bring forward that argument, I am prepared to do that for you guys.
Mayor, I'd be comfortable with that. And this is, again, this one is waiting on the Parks and Research Committee.
Sure.
As well. And it's, if we're going to do that this year anyway, and/or the possibility of losing it, I don't know if there's a, if we're going to lose the contract.
We, what happened was, and, and there's a lot of credit to Rand Potter, our senior planner. He has actually maintained contact with them. And he asked for just a little bit more time so that we can just ask this question. Because if there is a comfort level with the council, being, thinking that if there's enough justification, you could find that it's the only, it's, it's such a unique thing that we can use the sole source, then we, we could proceed that way. And so they were willing to wait for that answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
I think, I think if we have two other cities that have used sole source for it, and they have documentation providing that they are a sole source, I'm comfortable with you bringing that forward to us.
Okay.
So as long as we can compare that with the other cities, you know what I mean? To see.
Joe, since the other two cities, which are, you said Albany and Westland, do we know, since they've done that, has there been a, any change in?
The law or anything?
State law on that particular topic?
No.
Okay. Thanks. Councilor Patton?
Uh, I, it sounds like we can move forward with doing this as a sole source. I was going to say, you know, what is the 80/20 of us getting in a lawsuit for doing it this way? It sounds like lawsuit is more than that 20%.
It sounds like lawsuit is more than that twenty percentile.
Well, it, I, I don't want to necessarily give percentages. I, what I want to do is make sure that we're doing it right, so that people feel like, you know, we're above board and that we're moving forward and following all the law. So, if, I just wanted to be clear that the council is the one who's going to have to find that. I am prepared to argue for it and, and present it in a way that I think you'll be comfortable with it. But it is, it is itself a, kind of a unique, like, I think we had to do that with our streetlights, because we, there was only one particular manufacturer that made that particular thing. You see what I mean? So, it isn't, it isn't so unique, but anyway, there you go. And maybe our new city administrator has a, has an opinion on it as well.
Yep, just push that.
Okay. Council, I don't think it's a matter of eighty-twenty or avoiding a lawsuit as much as it is of making sure that the findings are adopted, so that those findings exist.
And one last thing, I believe one of the other things that was talked about when we sent this back was the funding mechanism. I believe, wasn't it Councilor Hensley and I kind of agreed that this should be coming from SDCs, and I wasn't sure if that was part of the conversation? Or no, it's a grant, so we don't, okay.
Well, no, it's-
It's like a discount.
It's a partial grant, like, there's still a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar-
That we pony.
-price that will-
Yes.
-will be asking the council to pay for.
Okay.
So, or, or I should say, the, the contract will call for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think-
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I know you control the agenda. Would you like to see this ASAP, like, maybe even next meeting?
Well, you, we got a two-week, two Wednesday hiatus.
Oh, okay.
So, we don't meet until June seventh, so, yeah, so-
I, I think it's-
City Administrator and I will convene and whatnot. If you think that it can be ready by the seventh, then I would say yes, if we can do that.
Okay.
Because the second meeting in June is very jam-packed with budget items and things. I know that this has been out there simmering for a little while. We should probably get that moved along, if we can.
And I know that the advisory committee was excited about it and, and wanting it to happen, and, sorry to steal your thunder, but I-
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then I also know that the company would like to hear back whether we're going to pull the trigger or something.
No, perfect, yep, so I think you're good, you got direction?
Yeah.
How, how long do we have to wait for this?
Well, they had originally put a thirty-day limit on it, kind of as a pressure thing, but what they didn't even realize is, they, they are used to dealing with cities that only have to pass resolutions. Our special ordinance causes-
Because we're unique.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so, they didn't realize that it was going to take longer than thirty days, period, anyway. And so, that, that started a discussion where, come on, guys, can you just wait a little bit longer?
Yeah, so, I, I'm going to throw this out, as, I don't, hopefully there's no sharp objects over there. If this is something that the Parks Board has been kind of chomping at the bit for, and maybe there's like one or two other things that are hot to track, is it possible that we can have like a quickie meeting just to clean up some of this house stuff, like, clean things up a little bit before Fourth of July?
Well, yeah, this will-
Two, two meetings before the Fourth of July.
I thought you said we were going to be on a two-week hiatus. Oh, it's because of the way the month falls.
We have a, we have a five, a two-meeting hiatus.
Ah, okay. Well, I mean, I'd still be, I'd still be-
Yeah, it's a five Wednesday from there.
I'd still be up.
So, four, four, four months a year, we get a five-week month where we get a two-week break between council meetings, so.
I'm just saying, we had to have a little quickie meeting to get this moving for the Parks people. I could phone in from Utah, wherever I'm going to be that, so.
No, we're not going to take the month of June off.
Okay.
If that's what you're looking for.
No, I'm not looking for it. We got a lot of crap to deal with. It's all good.
Yep, okay. So, Joe, I think we're good, yeah, go forth and make a sole, sole purchasing piece for this aspect, and bring it for the first meeting in June. Perfect. Next new business item is further discussion regarding the city administrator position recruitment process. So, again, we just appointed Ms. Stein as our interim, and so, we've got to begin the process of going out and hiring a recruiting firm and beginning the recruiting process for a permanent city administrator. And so, that's what this discussion is about. I know in years past, we've done internal, where our staff has taken care of the process. In other times, we've gone out, gotten an RFP for basically a recruiting firm to help us out. My two cents on the matter is based on the current bandwidth of activity and the narrowness of the availability of staff. I would recommend that we go and bring in, or do a request for proposal to get a recruiting firm in, and start with that first.
We, we should be able to do this, I believe last time it was right around thirty thousand.
But inflation, Joe.
Okay, so, so it will, it will only require three quotes, so we can, we can call up three consultants and try to get the best price, and then maybe present to you those options at the next meeting.
Well, if it can happen that quickly, that would be, that would be great.
Okay.
Again, this is not our first run-through on this, so I'm sure there's a couple of names already on speed dial.
We, we've utilized two of the people I'm thinking about in the past, so the third will be easy to get a quote from.
Perfect. And so, that's my two cents, and I'm seeing some head nods and thumbs up to keep going.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent on that. I, I wouldn't want to put the burden on staff to do it. I think we have enough going on right now, and I think bringing in outside, it, it's nice to have a, a neutral third party win something this big anyways.
Absolutely. Okay, great.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Moving into mayor's business, so, the Clockamas County Coordinating Committee, which is Land Use and Transportation, that I co-chair, is, we are having our annual retreat, and so I'll have an update at our next meeting from that. So, that's going to be just a very heated conversation over land use as it relates to houselessness, I think is the term being used currently, and then discussing transportation and our ongoing battle with tolling, right, sorry, congestion pricing. It might be both, so, more to come on that.
Time of day.
Time of day. The Region One Area Commission on Transportation doesn't meet until June. Mark your calendars for May twenty-ninth at eleven AM. There is a Memorial Day ceremony at Zion Cemetery, so please come out for that, Memorial Day weekend, to remember those that have died in service and served our country. It's, it's usually about half hour, forty-five minutes. I think the Boy Scouts come out and do, put flags on the graves of those that have served, so it is a very impactful morning, so please come, check that out. Comprehensive Plan, so the city's begun the whole revising of our comprehensive plan, and that development and the meetings for those are going to be starting here very, very soon, so please watch the city website. I will keep bringing updates here. There's a, a great, many things regarding this that's going to be very concerning to the city in terms as we grow from a, the industrial park to housing, to where roads are going to go in the future, so please watch that and get engaged. I want to say congratulations to Dragonberry Produce. They just are pretty, they're within weeks of completing their new expansion for their warehouse, which will be quite phenomenal. They had a great reception last night, that many of us here attended. The big thing for them, that they're very excited about, was that they're hoping to almost triple their workforce by the end of the year. And so, as this is coming to completion, there's already discussions of what their next phase is going to look like, that they're going to want to do here probably within the next couple of years. So, it was very interesting at the reception, they had a trade delegation from Vietnam there, and there was the Council General from San Francisco, who heads up eleven states on the West Coast for trade, and it was pretty phenomenal to hear that Vietnam is number eleven in terms of trading partners with the US. And Dragonberry actually gets to be kind of spearheading a lot of really great things, so, you know, over the years, Dragonberry's put into, or introduced purple potatoes to Vietnam, and pumpkin seeds, and, you know, so those are a lot of Pacific Northwest Pacifics, but the pumpkin seeds, I know that we have a couple growers here in the Canby area that have been able to benefit from that trade agreement. So, more to come on that, it's definitely a, a big opportunity. And then, also, coming up, it's almost summer, Saturday market is going on now, so come check that out. And then, there are events galore, so Slice of Summer, Canby's Big Weekend, a ton of stuff coming up, and so, watch for announcements on those. I think that's my list for tonight. Council comments and liaison reports, we're going to start, Council Davis.
Over there.
Yeah?
I knew you were up to something.
I don't know what gave it away.
Okay, first of all, Fire Board, we have three Fire Board members that were re-elected yesterday. Chairperson Sean Carroll, Ron Swar, pastor of Forest Square Church, and Bo Ellis from the, from District Two. They, nobody ran against them, so they are incumbents coming back to the Fire Board. The levy, of course, did pass, thank you to all the citizens that supported the Fire District levy. Currently, it sits at sixty point five-four percent, which is very good, so we very much appreciate that. We, the Fire District is going through fire officer testing as we speak, yesterday, yesterday, today, and tomorrow, down at the Forest Square Church, that's established in a sole service list. Chief Trow and I are hosting the Police Department out over at the EOC, we're going to be doing a tabletop exercise on the twenty-second. We get together with all of our agency partners, School District, Police Department, Fire Department, city, city staff, and this time, we're also going to have the railroad there, as well as AT&amp;T, FirstNet, to talk about. And what we do is tabletop, and this particular exercise is going to be a substantial potential disaster in the center of the city that might require some evacuations and things. But what we do is, we sit down, we just talk it over, and we get the agencies together, just mainly so we can meet each other, know who's going to be in the emergency operations center at the time that we have a disaster like that. So, we do have the emergency management, the director from Clockamas County Emergency Management, as well as myself, that will facilitate it. And we generally only take about two hours, and afterwards, we're going to have FirstNet there to talk about radio communications, cell phone communications, and how they can hook up their cell phones to our radios if they need to, so that we can have communications with the, with the high school during the evacuation. The Canby Adult Center, if I could ask the interim city administrator to maybe make contact with Kathy Robinson, and I can go up there if you'd like with you and introduce you to her, but the prior city administrator was meeting with Kathy to talk about their remodel at the Canby Adult Center, and it's a, that particular building is owned by the city, and so the city has some responsibility for the remodel, and then, of course, they have funds available to do inside. But I know the Kathy Robinson is fighting a bet to get that continued, and I just want to reassure her that we're not missing a step here with the Canby Adult Center. I really appreciate what Kathy does up at the Adult Center.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Can you repeat the date of the tabletop exercise?
Yes, that's the twenty-second, Monday, the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Yep. George is going to have a lot of donuts there. The, the Canby Adult Center also had the Mother's Day lunch, this last, this last Monday was well-attended. Parks, the Parks Committee is very, very busy. We very much appreciate the old city administrator signing the contract for Ernestson Park for the, that's, that's out there now, so they're working on that as well. The Parks Committee worked closely with the Parks Director and Public Works Director in regards to projects for next year's budget, so we'll have that list for our budget and for the budget hearing, as far as what should be included in the budget, or at least what they would like to see included in the budget. Parks in the Park continues, and the Maple Street Park, that again, is time-sensitive, so, and I know Joe's aware of that, but just making sure that we stay on the contracts on that, so that we can continue with that. And the reason it's time-sensitive is August is coming up here very soon, and that's when we hope to start work, is after softball season, so that they can do the turfing and the lights at Maple Street Park. And then, the mayor and myself have been in contact with Cogeo, and we're continuing some discussions with Cogeo in regards to the athletic field facility. They're ready to, well, we'll find out more information on Thursday, when the mayor and I have our discussions with Cogeo for the council, hopefully, so we can move that project forward as well. And the chamber, of course, has a new director, and she's working out real well at this point, so we're excited to have the new director on board over at the chamber. That concludes my report.
Council Davis, with the, we would love to meet the new chamber director, so if you wouldn't mind if I were to-
Yeah, I'll invite a council leader.
Counsel me?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you. Council Varwick?
Thank you very much. I have met her, and she's lovely and excited for the chair, and so that's great. I don't have any liaison reports, but I did also attend the Dragonberry tour and dinner last night, and, you know, it was, we, I've known that Dragonberry has been a very good community partner, but one of the things that they planned in their building is a space that they can allow the community to use, so it's, it's really, a really nice conference room and, I guess, event space, so that's great. I did learn, you know, some of you might know that when Dragonberry first came to our industrial park, they were one of the very first drought-resistant landscapes in the city of Canby, which I think is pretty cool, but what I learned yesterday during the tour is that as you look at the landscape, if you were to look at it as an overhead, it is actually a dragon that goes around their building.
Really?
Which is interesting, yeah.
I could, our tour guide didn't mention that part. They just talked about how they hold the water underneath and reuse it. They could talk about the, the dragon.
Yeah, yeah, so an interesting tidbit of information-
Fun, cool.
-that I thought I would share. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
I'll put the drones out, so I can take pictures of them.
Council President Lindsay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a, a big report, and the Traffic Safety Commission will be bringing forward a recommendation eventually, they've been gone for a while, but they've been talking about the red flux cameras again, so they're going to be presenting an idea to us in the near future. And I think that is all for liaison, I just wanted to add on to your Memorial Day announcement, we do have the ceremony at Zion, but following that, join us at the Legion for chicken dinner.
Groovy.
And that is all I have.
Thank you. Council Pat?
I am prepared, if not prepared. Okay, I got the green light, I have not turned this button off the whole meeting, okay? So, the school board met, student update, midterm grades are out, AP testing is underway, the grads are making final plans as graduation is on the horizon, and they enter a new chapter in their lives, which is both scary and exciting. Prom, I believe, is this week, and the theme is Met Gala, and that tied into the fact that they did not have Spirit Week, so they did a Spirit Day, and the theme was to wear red in op, in like, as a nod to the red carpet for the Met Gala, which I thought was very clever. Congrats to the choir for winning state. I have a soft spot for choir, because I was in choir when I was a kid, so that was really cool. And also, band and equestrian is going to state, I was also in the band as a color guard member, so, the go band. The spring sports are wrapping up, and Chair Magenheimer actually wanted, made a really nice thank you to all of the students that served as liaison, updating the school board for the season, because most of them, they're, they're mostly seniors, so they'll be, they'll be graduating, and so it'll be interesting to see the new crop of students get involved with participating in that process. The Care Award this month was awarded to Peggy Garner- The care award this month was awarded to Peggy Garner. And if I missed a letter in your name, I apologize. That's what I got from the video. Public comment was more regarding books, but I will say I was struck. Someone referenced the Waltons in their comment, and I wondered if any student in the school district would even know what that reference pertained to. So I thought that was interesting. They're waiting for the economic forecast to come in from the state so they can work on the next phase of their budget. As far as building update, bricks are going up, sheetrock is being hung, and windows are going to be arriving for the new science wing this week or next. One of the big wins that they had was they changed the way they do their design-build process, and they saved $1.7 million in making this one little change. And so I'm wondering if maybe we could reach out to the school board and figure out how they did that. Because if we could save a couple million dollars on some of the projects we do, I think that would be pretty cool. We could actually pave some more roads and put in some more sidewalks. And there was an update given on the dual-language program, and it is doing well. As far as the Cambie Utility Board, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding the new conference room policy, your use policy. There was some more input from the board, and they're going to make another pass at the policy for the next meeting. Public comment, there was an individual that attended, and there was some concerns regarding the delay in EV charging stations, which was something involving both the Cambie Utility and Cambie Public Works. So I'm going to reach out to you folks to see, to dig into that a little bit more. The safety audit went well, and they have a few things that they need to fix, like replacing a pole and some other stuff, and then they'll be good on that. There was a lot of discussion about future infrastructure, as far as the Water Master Plant should be complete next week. And they are moving for, they are continuing to move ever closer with looking at the new, how they'll do the permitting and stuff for the new water treatment plant. So I'm just going to let you know, every council update, I'm going to mention the water treatment plant, because it is going to be a big ask, and we need to approve it as a city, not as a city council. And the Malala Water Group is applying for a new grant to fund testing of the Malala River water, which we currently pull from. They had put in for a grant, but they did not get it. And so they're going back through to see if they could do that again. And I will mention, similar to Counselor Davis's comment, you may want to reach out to Carol, who is the executive director over there at Cambie Utility. She would meet with Scott from time to time, and so you might just want to introduce yourself to her. And the only other thing I have, and this kind of came to me while we were sitting here, right? Yeah. When I was a kid, we would, the band, like, for Memorial Day service, all, like, there was a parade, and the kids would all come to the park and participate. And there was an organization that would give out, like, treats to all the kids in an effort to thank them for coming and participating. Is that something that we would be able to do, like, help support, is treats to kids for that event, or is that a no-no?
I mean, I guess the answer is, if, if that was something the city wanted to spend its money on, sure, I, I would think in, you know, if, is the question, is there, is there a hope to do something like that this time around, or is there a hope to do it in the future? That sort of thing. And is this something that the council is all kind of asking for?
What do you think?
So first off, I would say that it's not necessarily a city-sponsored event.
Yeah.
So that's something to just keep in consideration. I'm not opposed to it. I don't know, again, numbers-wise, and what we could do to pull together, like, what did you have in mind?
Well, when I was a kid, they would give, like, little ice cream cups to all the kids, because it was usually hot. And so I just wasn't sure if there was, it just came to me, I wasn't sure if there was an appetite among council to maybe do something like that. Not for this year, but for future.
Sure. I'm not opposed. Counselor President Hensley? You're close to the organization that puts this on.
Yeah, it is a Legion-sponsored event, and I would be willing to look at this event and with those eyes, with, through that filter this year. Historically, I don't recall very many children attending.
I think he was meaning for the band that plays.
The band is not coming this year. That's a whole nother story I won't get into right now.
Okay.
And so I'm not opposed to doing something like that in the future, but it's not usually hot at 11:00 AM in May, and there's not a lot of children, but we could talk about something like that in the future.
Yeah, it's just a way to get younger people involved in the process and.
I mean, they might come if they knew there was ice cream.
Yeah, exactly. Get them to, to sort of understand the meaning of, of the actual holiday, not that they just get a day off, sort of thing.
Right, exactly. And it's not the, on a shopping day or whatever. But yeah, it's probably a little late in the game for this year, but.
Yeah, it's just something I thought about while I was sitting here.
That's a, a good idea to talk about from, maybe next year. I think, I thought I saw it.
That was it.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I like the idea, but maybe kick it over to Jamie and Tyler to kick around and come back to us with a recommendation on something like that, because they do a lot of that stuff for us. And so I'd look to Jamie and Tyler nicer to come up with a recommendation.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. City Administrator Business and Staff Reports. Ms. Stein, do you have anything tonight to talk to us? I'm just kidding. Mr. Lindsey?
Well, so, you know, as a reminder, and I know you all know this, but the viewing audience, the budget, the first budget meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
Six.
Yeah. So there's that going on for the city, trying to get through those two budget meetings on those subsequent Thursdays here in May, so that then whatever comes out of that can go to you guys by the end of June, and we can kind of seal up the deal for the following fiscal year, starting in July 1. And I would like to welcome Eileen Stein.
All right, thank you, Joe.
I do want to say one thing.
Yes.
I just appreciate the confidence placed in me in this appointment tonight, and I'm looking forward to getting to work.
Wonderful. Well, we appreciate that, and we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Patton?
I have a couple of questions about the staff reports.
Okay.
If I may.
Sure.
One of them is in, and I, just for clarification, in the Chief Trow's report, there are some tables, and in it, it talks about traffic complaints, like, the number of traffic complaints. Is that, like, people who call up and say, this car is doing crazy things, and here is their license plate number or their color, or is that what that is?
One way or a specific area. So speeding vehicles on North Hollywood Street or something like that. So both of those would have to come into us.
Okay, fantastic. And then the last one is, is I've noticed that on, as far as with the finance report, that the item that there is still, that the finance department is still struggling on a number of tasks to try and get caught up from the transition. Cambie Utility Board was having a similar situation where they were falling behind in some finance stuff, and they actually brought on a consultant or, like, a subcontractor to help them get caught up on some of the things that could be handled by that. And I'm wondering if maybe that would be something that we should look at to try and help the finance department get caught up and get back on track, so they aren't constantly feeling like they are being crushed under the eight ball. That's just something that came to mind through that discussion.
Well, I don't think that's a bad idea with, you know, Ms. Stein coming on officially as, tonight is her first day. I'd like to see her get her sea legs under her a little bit on what's going on, and what does that mean? And I know that Mr. Lindsey will help get her caught up on that and on a number of issues, whatnot facing Cambie. And so if that becomes a conversation piece with the finance director and them, you know, that would be something that they'll need to make a decision on and take a look at.
Okay.
So.
That was all I had.
All right. Next on the agenda is another opportunity for citizen input. Not seeing anyone rushing forward. Maya, Action Review.
You have approved the consent agenda, Resolution 1382, 1383, 1384, adopted ordinance 1598, 1599, and 1600. Approved ordinance 1601 and 1602 to second readings on June 7th, 2023. Approved staff to bring back information back for the sole source Outdoor Fitness Court for the six, seven meeting, or June 7th meeting. And approved an RFP process to begin regarding the city administrator position recruitment process.
Well, and I just ask that that's not an RFP, but a intermediate procurement process.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Great. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second them.
Okay.
Same thing at the same time.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn the city council meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So please, we're during the city council meeting, but we are going to be taking a brief break, because following this is a Urban Renewal Agency meeting here in probably the next seven minutes. So thank you very much. Good night, Cambie, and we'll see you beginning of June. Good night, Camby, and we'll see you beginning of June.
Yeah.
Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the Camby Urban Renewal Agency meeting for May seventeenth. We have had a long evening of city council meetings before this, so we are a little bit later than the posted time, but we will get going. The second item on our contract, or on our agenda is citizen input and community announcements. Do we have any? Nobody wants to speak for tonight? Perfect. Moving right along, we'll take a motion for the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Moving on to item number four. This will be quick. We are going to get an update on fiscal year twenty-two, Urban Renewal Agency Annual Report, projects, and our debt service, and I believe, Jamie can start, and then Eric will come up. Okay, perfect.
Can I just say something before we start?
Yes.
We're going to do the annual report, but the more specific question, the questions that you guys had, I'll, I have stuff to do with that after the report is over.
Wonderful, thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. Hello, Jamie.
Hello. Good evening. Jamie Stiggle, Economic Development Director. And so tonight, we are going to present the Urban Renewal Annual Report as a refresher for some of our longer-standing agency members and to bring up to speed our newer members. The annual report looks at 2022, so a lot of this information is going to feel outdated, but we want to use it to serve as a reminder of the projects that we've done. We have some information about projects that have been discussed in the, in the past, but not completed or not started, and then I'll turn it over to Eric, who will present the financial data and then answer the questions that you have. So as a reminder, the Urban Renewal District Goals and Objectives: diversify the economic base and can't family wage jobs within the district, to maintain effective, efficient, and safe traffic system for vehicular and pedestrian users. The third goal is to improve and retain existing businesses. And goal four, to improve attractive visual amenities for customers and community members throughout the district. So one of the items that we worked on in 2022 was the industrial park access, which included the traffic signal at Sequoia Parkway and Hazel Dell Way. That's where Fred Meyer is located. The city spent $25,000 on that project. And as a reminder, that project is a way to, as a mitigation effort for moving industrial park traffic from the Camby Pioneer Industrial Park to Highway ninety-nine. It also serves to move traffic from the south side of town as residents have increased their to Highway ninety-nine. That's the city's first traffic signal, and then we have an agreement with Clockness County to maintain that traffic signal. Additionally, we've been working on the Walnut Street Extension Project, which is the industrial park to Highway ninety-nine street extension. Walnut Street is where Columbia Distributing is currently located. OLCC has planned to be developed across the street from there. The city purchased with Urban Renewal Funds in 2019 the property directly across the street as the first step towards building that road to Highway ninety-nine. The city spent $385,000 and some change on that project, and that includes beginning engineering right-of-way. Our Public Works Department is taking the lead on that project. The downtown, yes.
Sorry, do you prefer questions at the end?
I prefer questions whenever you prefer to ask them.
Well, then I have a question. So the $385,000 there for the Walnut Extension piece, is that Urban Renewal dollars?
It is.
This money, yes. All of the money that's talked about in this presentation is Urban Renewal funded. The downtown Quiet Zone and Grant Street Arch, the Quiet Zone in 2022, we spent $353,000. That was design, engineering, construction. As you remember, the agreement with Union Pacific Railroad, which wasn't just to be able to do the Quiet Zone, the complete Quiet Zone, but then also there'll be, you know, work as we continue. We have the agreement with them. And then also the right-of-way acquisition, which was with several of the private property owners at Grant, Ivy, and Elm Streets. With that project became, also came the Grant Street Arch, and the city spent seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand in Urban Renewal Funds for the Grant Street Arch, which is, of course, across Grant Street at Northwest First Avenue. The two thousand and two for the facade improvement grant program. So the interesting thing about when someone applies for and receives a facade improvement grant is that that project will, you have two years to finish the project. So Caldera International applied in 2021, but some of the funding was paid out to them in 2022. That included masonry, masonry, cleaning and painting, the double doors, which were where the booknook is, and window replacement. Holly Mall also utilized the facade improvement grant with exterior paint, exterior lighting, and we included signage, but that is just for the hardware and the mounting material as the Urban Renewal Agency of years prior were concerned with businesses, you know, if a business could move, could change every six months, but making the investment in the hardware and the mounting materials, that's usually something that stays with the building. And then additionally, Ace Glass, which had seen an accident kind of tear a new, a new hole through their front that was not originally there, so they refurbished the building's exterior appearance with painting prep, repaired that brick, or I'm sorry, that CMU block wall, repaired and replaced windows, and then primed and painted that exterior as well.
Jamie, I have a question for you in regards to the facade improvement. How are we verifying or vetting the dollars spent on that? Are we just writing checks when they give us receipts saying they did it, or are we? Ace Glass is the key one for me, right? Is you look at it and it doesn't look a lot different than it did prior. I'm not trying to discount the work that was done there, but it doesn't look like it was good use of our funds. How are we ensuring that if we're going to spend money on a facade improvement, that it's going to actually improve a building?
Well, Ace Glass is, I think, a great example. You know, a car had gone through the front of that, so before the funds were utilized and the grant was applied for, there was a hole with plywood in front of that. Or years past, I'll use the building that, that we see here, when it was Parsons Pharmacy, due to a storm, the awning had been ripped. And so even though it was replaced with a new awning, it looked very similar to what it looked like before. Or if it were to be painted, it might look similar but be fresh. And so it's, it's, we make sure that they do what they say that they're going to do, what it comes before you guys as, with their application.
So I know we had the conversation about Ace prior. Anything that should have been covered by their insurance, shouldn't it be something that facade improvement should cover? Is that correct?
Well, they-
So replacing blocks, if a car drove through it, that car's insurance should be paying that, not us, right?
They applied for the grant for up to $25,000 to repair that building for their part of it, and they submitted the receipts. They followed the process. As far as like the insurance and who paid for their half, or how it was paid, I, that is not something that the city follows necessarily.
So that's one thing that I would like to see us do, is ensure that if we're spending money, I want us to have a say in what they're doing, and making sure that we're not just writing checks to everybody who says, you know, Joe Schmo owns a construction company, can write a bid for whatever he wants to write it for.
Well, we pay on the lowest bid also, so, so it could be, you know, they provide the bids to us, and it could be two bids if it's under fifteen thousand. If it's over fifteen thousand, it's three bids, and then the city refunds, or, sorry, reimburses the money on the lowest bid. So even if they went with the highest bid, or, you know, used someone that they had used in the past to do work, that's, that's the process for that part.
Okay. I just think there can be some refining to that so that we have a little more proof or say, and we can have a side conversation about that, because I do have some concerns about a couple of different things, but we'll have a side conversation on that.
I would agree with Commissioner Varwig is that that was clearly an insurance claim. It's not our job to benefit them to replace what was there. It's supposed to improve, and we're not there to finance their business to put down the deposit that they couldn't afford to pay to the insurance company to replace that building. And same with the awning on the building, too, so I fully support that. What is the benefit of that facade improvement if it's not improving the looks of that building to improve the economy?
Um, I'm, sorry. Go ahead. One, I'd be careful as a group here throwing out those kinds of like statements of, to Ms. Stickle's point, how, we do get a say. Like, they, that design comes to us as an agency, and we can say no. I remember distinctly, we had a conversation about a storage company that wanted to do some improvements on their storage units, and it became a big conversation of like, well, do we consider, what do we consider blight, and then do we spend money to give a grant to storages? We don't, we didn't decide which businesses get, I mean, I wasn't a big fan of doing storage units necessarily, but in this, I think to answer your question, Commissioner Davis, was, I think there's intrinsic value to them, was there much of a change? No. But the paint was different, it was fresher, it was cleaner looking. It's, it's a wonky corner to begin with, I get all that, but I, I think that it, it cleans up a building even with, if it's fresh paint. So that's, I mean, my two cents piece of it, like I said, I just think we got to be careful. We don't know what the damage was, we don't know what insurance was going to cover or not cover, that's not for us to decide how that goes, but I mean, I don't, and I don't know how we put something in place that curtails that or, or clamps down on the funding mechanism that they're going to use to make their portion of the, the grant.
Yeah.
May I also make one more point? That the facade improvement grant, and especially with, with some of these cases, we talk in terms of the business, but a business can apply, and certainly a business that owns the building, but really it is about the property, the, the investment is in the property so that, the reason, example, the signage with the hardware and mounting material, it's so that it's not something that can quickly be changed over, it's so that the buildings and the, the long time investment is kept in Camby for, to eradicate the blight that is there, whether that's, you know, a small improvement for some people, you know, for some of the property owners or the business owners who might not be able to update, or they can't do a huge, you know, we've had people max out their 25,000, but we have some that just use for paint or for windows because that small investment is all that they are able to do, or all that they, their, their business who's renting that property is able to do, but that it still makes, it, it's not always a huge flashy redevelopment, it sometimes is, is new paint or something like that, but it's so that the investment sticks with the property.
Yeah. I do think there's some concern among the council. I know I've heard from a couple of people, so maybe this is something, especially as we're going through the budget process, and I don't mean to go off track with it, so maybe I'll just mention to him, Mr. Stein and Joe, and maybe at a future meeting, we can have a further discussion about the facade improvement program.
Absolutely.
And that we can work out, someone said, maybe that's a work session, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry to hijack here.
No, that's okay.
Oh, Jason had a question.
Did I? No.
He did not, okay. Continue.
So one of the other items that we have spoken about with the Urban Renewal Agency in the past is just the possible uses of the remaining Urban Renewal Funds, and so we wanted to make sure to include that in this presentation because obviously, as we're talking about what has been done, and then when, when Eric comes up and is speaking to the financial aspect of the Urban Renewal Agency and the Urban Renewal District and the funding, just so that we could kind of help to bridge that gap with the further conversation that, that will be had, but that there were projects that were outlined as part of the Urban Renewal Plan and then by the previous Urban Renewal Agency. The ones that are in bold at the top were ones that had been previously identified as priority projects, which included painting the logging trail bridge and installing a footbridge that provided access to the logging trail bridge, then also redeveloping Northwest Second Avenue, the downtown alleyways, updating those, but then also projects like completing First to Second Street on, on North First Street and Grant Street, or Northwest First Avenue from Elm Street to Douglas, Township Road from Baker Prairie Middle School to Sequoia, and then additional weight park improvements. So we just wanted to make sure that we were providing those, they have been as part of a, a previous presentation, but just so that you had them as, while you're talking through the finances, to, to reference, if you'd like.
Dee, I think we need to add to that list the reimbursement to the city from the Urban Renewal District for the community park, which we haven't had discussion on yet.
Well, I think that reimbursement falls under the city council, and we don't have those hats on right now. Correct?
I would say it's, it's both, you can have either conversation because it's, you're the agency, so the agency has a say in whether or not-
Yes, I was going to say, Chair, have you written a memo to the mayor about this?
The memo has not yet been written. My apologies, everyone. The mayor and I have had a conversation that the memo is coming, but I will officially write the memo.
Okay. So this is only one side of that two-way conversation?
Okay, very good.
How do you like it?
And so with that, I think it is Eric's part of the presentation.
Thanks, Jamie.
Good night. How are you?
Good evening, Eric.
Okay. I'm going to go through the financial stuff quickly, you guys can stop me and ask questions anytime you want. So first up is the maximum indebtedness schedule. This just details what the maximum indebtedness is for the URA, the 51 million, how much is available for URA projects, all the expenditures that have been counted against the maximum indebtedness, and the remaining debt capacity available for future projects at the bottom. So you can see the total expenditures against maximum indebtedness at the end of June twenty-two was 52.8 million, leaving the debt capacity for future projects at 4.46 million. Yeah.
Sorry. Where does the refinancing come in? The refinancing amount, the one we refinanced?
What do you mean exactly?
Well, when we refinanced to a lower interest rate. Joe, maybe you can help me out on that?
Yeah, it, it was a lower interest rate, there were three bonds that were put into to one debt, and then that debt payment was increased, and the term of all those, the first three loans, they would have been paid off in 2036, and with the refinancing, they get paid off in 2026, so it shortened the debt payment schedule by ten years.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the savings came out of the shorter-
The interest savings.
Right, the interest savings, yeah.
Right, the interest we didn't pay, savings, yeah.
So that was that $6 million number that we've seen, right?
Yes.
So it wasn't cash savings, it was just interest savings, so- So it's not extra money to spend?
That's right. Yep. So here we have the charts for the increases in incremental assessed value on the left and the revenue on the right. So the value of all the properties in the U R D is shown on the left-hand side, starting in two thousand and two. Now, this is the incremental assessed value. It's not, so that's why it starts at zero. So when the Urban Renewal Agency was started, we're assuming the values are, you know, at zero for this incremental chart. So you can see that it's gone up, you know, over two hundred and fifty million dollars in value, the property. The chart on the right shows the incremental revenue that has gone up. So we're looking at about four and a half million dollars worth of property tax revenue now, and it started around half a million. These are all the impacts on the tax, taxing district. So the very far left is the assessed value of all of the properties in the U R D. The incremental assessed value removes the frozen base amount. So when the U R D started, it had a base value. And so this incremental assessed value is just how much the value of the property is going up, removing that frozen base amount. Then the columns for Clackamas County, the City and the Swim, Clackamas Education, Fire District, Clackamas Community College, Port of Portland, School District, and the Vector Control. That is how much property tax revenue is taken and then used by the Urban Renewal District to invest in that area. So the total taxes levied, far right column, is forty-three point four nine million. That's how much revenue has come into the U R D from property tax to use in reinvestment. Any questions?
If I may, I just want to point out in this chart, and it's called out here in this report, and, you know, the Urban Renewal District gets a lot of flak for its creation, which I think is unfounded. But I think it's important to drive home these numbers and that when the taxing district was froze in nineteen ninety-nine, correct? The, it's listed here that the base, the tax base that was frozen at that period in time was sixty-five point six million dollars. It's currently valued at the three hundred and thirty-eight point six million. So in twenty-five years, that land has generated two hundred and seventy-three million dollars in new taxes. There is no way, and I don't care who slices the pie, whatever way they want, there is no way that the city could have created that big of a gap, that big of a, of an increase in that value to benefit all these taxing districts without creating this Urban Renewal District. There was not enough money in the city budget to put in that infrastructure. And I just think it's important to drive that fact home.
I love numbers, and when I started digging into this, it was shocking how much the value has gone up in there and how much property tax revenue is being generated by this. I think this, the city should be really proud of this district. Next slide. So these are the cash flow projections. This was done on fiscal year twenty-two, and the projections for twenty-three moving forward, I did like last July and then updated this in February. So we're going to look at this, but I have updated stuff that I brought that we can look at later that hopefully will give you guys a better idea of how much money is remaining. So, you know, in, in twenty-three, when I did this, you can see what we had for projects listed there, the U R D projects. Well, let me start at the top. There's the property tax revenue coming in and the beginning fund balance. So the, the resources are about five point six million. In the expenditures, we have the due to, the, due to the city, which essentially is funding the Economic Development Department. And there's some programs, beautification and the facade program. And then there's the capital projects. The U R D projects are maybe projects that are smaller, didn't take off or whatever, so I haven't identified them specifically in there. At fifty thousand, the Grant Street Arch at one twenty-five, Wait and Community Parks at four twenty-five, and the Logging Bridge at four twenty-five. Lower section is the debt payments, and those are the actual debt payments we have. The ones you see right there are all the ones that need to be made. When that one is made in F Y twenty twenty-six, all the debt is paid off. So in this chart, the projected maximum indebtedness remaining at the end of twenty-three was estimated at three point three million. I don't want to spend too much time on this one because I have some updated sheets that I think will be, be more relevant to you based off of more accurate numbers from just finishing the budget. So here we have the assessed valuation of the whole U R D at three hundred and thirty-nine million. The frozen base was sixty-six. The increased amount of valuation is two hundred and seventy-three million. There's a three percent annual increase in Oregon, so if we remove that, we can see that due to development, two hundred and thirteen million of assessed valuation has occurred since the beginning of the U R D, which is pretty amazing.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, that's it. Does anyone have any questions about any of that?
Eric, is that two hundred and thirteen in the industrial area only? Or do you know areas of where that two hundred and thirteen comes from?
I'm not really sure exactly where the urban renewal boundary is. In this report, I have, it shows it, but I'm not.
It's, it's that bow tie. So it's, it's both industrial parks. So the, you know, the Johnson Controls area too.
Right.
Yeah, and then the other industrial park, and then the downtown core is also within that, and then there's a little stretch down to Community Park as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, but primarily the industrial area.
Yeah, because I don't think, I'm not sure, I assume Community Park valuation went up just by that three percent, you know, the, the, what the assessor looks at.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the, in the report, sir, there is a map in here that's got the U R D area shaded in there.
Yeah, I know what the U R D looks like. I imagine the Dalia Building would probably be the only thing downtown that really added value.
Which building?
Dalia.
The Dalia.
The Andrews Building was.
Andrews Building.
Across from Wake Park. I mean, it's not as significant as the Dalia, but that was definitely one.
Yeah, but probably the Dalia. So a majority of it's the industrial area. Yeah.
Okay. My.
Eric, is there a possibility that due to the city line, is there a possibility to get that broken down so that that we know?
I got it.
You've got that? Okay, perfect.
Yep. So let's just look at the gen, oh, just, let's look at the budget first so I can show you guys where to look. Well, you already know, Sean, you just pulled it up, the due to economic development line This is the budget that I just, that we just turned over on Friday. So the due to economic development is the amount of money that actually, and we're projecting and proposing to transfer from the U R D over to the general fund. So, okay, so this is the urban renewal saying that, well, let's just look at F Y twenty twenty-four. The urban renewal is going to give four hundred and twenty-five thousand to the general fund for the Economic Development Department. So can you click on the Economic Development page? Thank you. And right here, under transfers in and other sources, you can see the transfer from the U R is the same four hundred and twenty-five coming from the Urban Renewal District to the Economic Development as a resource. Okay?
Question?
Yeah.
So where that four twenty-five, what is the four twenty-five? Is that, I assume, the Economic Development Director, the other person, as well as city administrator, you know, a certain percentage of city administrator?
Correct.
And how do you, how do you project closing that out without making an impact to the Urban Renewal District as twenty-six approaches?
Yeah, good question. I'll, let's see. Can you click on the month and U R? So I just want to talk about this to, to wrap up the funding there. So at the end of every month, we have to do a journal entry where we transfer money from the Urban Renewal District over to the general fund. This is part of the spreadsheet that I've set up that, that calculates it. So you can see that the regular salary and wages are included, the employee benefits, the insurance benefits, taxes and PERS. Those are actual charges that happen during the month that we cover. Then down below, that's labeled as materials and services. We have the cop year lease, the internal charges. There's the Independence Day expenses, the flower program, and you can see it's all totaling up there. Can, can you scroll down a little bit more? There's the overhead transfer to the general fund. So all of the expenditures that happened in the Economic Development Department total up there to the fifty-one thousand seven seventy for April, right? And then, can you scroll down just a little bit more? Well, I guess you can't. I guess we can see enough. That screen's in the way, obviously.
I was going to say, can you move the screen?
Okay. So then, I, I don't know why, but this is the way the previous finance team was doing this journal entry, so I'm just following them, but they removed the Main Street expenditure, the Independence Day expenditure, the flower program, the Economic Development City Grant expended, and then they removed fifty percent of the tourism coordinator. So Tyler Works is in the Economic Development Department. Sorry, I shouldn't have used his name. And we, I figure out what his wage is for the month and then I, I put it there in the yellow box, and then the green box is dividing that by two. So then we calculate that forty-seven thousand four hundred and eleven dollars needs to get transferred over. So I wanted to show specifically what I'm doing to get the money transferred over. As far as what you're asking about the city administrator, I know that doing the personnel estimates for the budget, that some portion of that person's pay is attributed to the Economic Development Department. I don't remember the exact percentage, but I know it's under ten percent. Jamie's a hundred percent in Economic Development and Tyler is as well, so two full-time employees in there. And I haven't heard what the plan is for twenty twenty-six.
I, I might have additional information for you, Councilor Davis. The, in the past, we, the city was thinking about relying a bit on the transient hotel tax to potentially help pay for tourism. I think that's why you're seeing that potential tourism coordinator position, right? And then I, I believe there, one of the strategies too is frankly, the recognition that when the U R D dissolves, there will be money coming to the city as well. So there'll be additional, I think it's maybe a million a year.
Over ten dollars.
Yeah, and so, and so that, that could, and that would be the will of the council, the budget committees and the city administrator to, to theorize, you know, what strategy they want to employ using that money for existing staff and services. Yeah.
So another question for you, and sorry to be difficult. So if I'm understanding correctly, Economic Development, their entire cost minus the fifty percent for the tourism coordinator is paid for out of urban renewal?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I'm trying to formulate my question because I, I know that our Economic Development Director does more than just stuff within the Urban Renewal District, right? So it expands outside of that, right? Because it's for the entire city, as well as I believe she's part-time communications. So is that also paid for out of urban renewal? And if so, why is Urban Renewal paying for salary for outside of the Urban Renewal District?
I wasn't involved in like the talking about why the Economic Development Director was paid out of urban renewal. I mean, that, that's just what happened when I got here. Just following. Go ahead.
Well, and it wasn't necessarily my decision either, but I, that's the way it's been set up, and I believe that if there is, it sounds like a, a question and/or a longing for a different way of doing it, I, the city can react and the Urban Renewal District can react as well.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it's a concern, right? I, I think she's here. Obviously, I think that our Economic Development Director does a phenomenal job at her job.
Thank you for saying that.
If she is also doing part-time communication, she is doing economic development outside of the boundary of the Urban Renewal District.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems like a conflict that the Urban Renewal District is paying the salary for work done outside of the Urban Renewal District.
Well, Jason threw his hand up there, so.
Yes, go, Jason.
I think, I mean, when you look at the Urban Renewal District boundaries, it mostly includes the industrial parks and the downtown core. And most of the work that's done, I mean, I don't believe that the Economic Development Director is like coordinating events on North Burke Street, which isn't like part of that. I would be curious to see, I mean, if we really want to dig into it, I'd be curious to see what, exactly what percentage of their, of their like work is outside of the Urban Renewal District. My suspicion is that it's actually a very low amount.
And that might be, that might be. It's just a concern.
Well, and I should, I should say, the mission, one of the mission, the original goals, I think it was the first slide, was to try to enhance existing businesses as well as, and, and I, I realize that those are very particularized as they are in that, the actual district, but elevating those businesses and having, say, events and things like that to elevate those also at the same time and tandem elevates everybody. So I, I think it is a matter of how much we want to try to quantify that and if there is an appetite on the Urban Renewal Agency's part, to then have a different calculation about percentages.
I know, I'm just one person. I, I do think that conversation should be had at some point, maybe not necessarily tonight, but I also, I see the importance of that position long after.
Right.
This agency is closed. And so we probably, we have just a few years, and so we probably need to start having those conversations now of how do we fund that position once this is closed? Because I don't want that position to go away.
Yep.
So, thanks to Chair Hudson.
Thank you. To answer your question, so, I haven't said this in a while, but we're going the Wayback Machine. I know. An oldie but a good.
Drinking game.
Fill out your bingo card. So back, pre, pre, our current Economic Development Director, the, to say so, back not too long ago, so there was a percentage of the city administrator's salary, it was a, I think anywhere from eight to ten percent, was paid for out of the Urban Renewal District. Certain materials and services, which you've covered, also paid for that. And then the Economic Development Director, a big portion of that salary was picked up by the general fund because, and the other aspect of that was under the Main Street umbrella. So Main Street was an actual national program that we were a part of, and so that, that role of Economic Development Director played into that, which is why all that salary was put in, or a big chunk of the salary was put in. So two thousand and seven, eight, was that the big like bottom falling out of the economy? The decision from a budgetary standpoint was to move all of that salary into the Urban Renewal District to alleviate some pressure off of the general fund for that, that couple of years' budget, and we've just never moved any portion of that back, knowing that once the district closed, that more than likely, we're going to keep that position and therefore those funds would roll back, funds rolling in, but also that expense rolling into the general fund. So that's kind of that, why that is where it is. So that's kind of that, why that is where it is right now. And so my guess, and this is maybe a budgetary conversation on the city front, that from a communication standpoint, is that part, is that added salary being taken out of, lumped in as urban renewal expense or city expense?
And I would assume, I would assume without absolutely knowing that her base rate, you know, or the base rate of that position is just the number that you're seeing. So if, if there was a, you know, 5% boost or whatever it was, that's coming out of that.
Coming out of...
Out of the urban renewal, I believe.
Okay.
But that would be my assumption. I, I could be disabused of that with actual facts.
Well, maybe we could clarify some of those things.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
You're a specialist. Go into budget conversations.
Yeah, just curious, like, I mean, again, you know, again, the communications angle was something that the council had said, as we put on our other hat, that that be something that we wanted to have happen and done. And so, again, sometimes, you know, is it a Rob Peter to Pay Paul kind of thing? Knowing that, again, that's economic, is that economic development as well, which we know that can be the case, so...
Yeah, and thanks for the history on that, Brian. The, I think it's important, the important point is, what Joe brought up, is that, you know, we're gonna be seeing this $1.2 million. I have no problems with the $420,000 today. But I think that we, as we get into the budget planning side of it, we definitely have to start laying out, what's the projection in '26 for revenue coming in? And what's that budget look like? Because we have to incorporate those wages back into the general fund budget.
That's right.
Chair Barbig?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps in the memo that you are going to send to the mayor, you should include a request that they start to evaluate the budgetary process of absorbing the economic director back into the general fund.
Hey, Maya, could you go back to the annual report? The PowerPoint presentation?
Just kill two birds with one stone.
Just clarify the request. It's actually smart to do it.
So on this slide right here, when we look at the city and swim local option levy column for 2022, that 952,000 at the bottom, that's how much property tax revenue would be coming to the city and the, the pool when the urban renewal district closes.
In '22, yeah. I did receive an update from the county assessor's office, and today it's $1.2 million.
Yeah. Okay. Can you put the PDF up that says do not use on the end? Yeah. Okay, so this is the cash flow projection that I just did like an hour before I came down here using... I put in the FY 2023 adopted budget numbers. And then I filled in the FY 20, because, because 2023 is gonna be done in like a month or so. And just for this, just for this meeting, I'm assuming the, the year of 2023 is over just so we can look at this projection thing, okay? So the numbers for FY 2024 are the numbers that are showing up in the U R A budget that you got, that we emailed out last Friday. So the property tax revenue shown at the top. Can you scroll down? So those expenditures that are showing the due to the city, community park at 100,000 and the Logging Bridge at 50,000, that's what's appearing in the FY '24 U R A budget. And then we have the debt payments. So resources minus requirements for FY '24 leaves us an ending fund balance of 418. And then there's the projected maximum indebtedness shown at the bottom. But what I think is important on this slide is if you look at the capital projects for the U R D, we have the 150 in 2024, and then the 900,000 in 2025, and the 801,000 to close it out in 2026. That is my estimate on how much money is available for projects in the U R D for '24, '25, and '26.
Less than $2 million?
Yep. That's, I just wanted to show you guys.
No, it's great.
The other, the other thing that comes to mind for me is once Walnut Street is complete, there might be some land, the, the property that we own, that U R A owns, right, is gonna have an acre or so on each side, I believe, of where we're putting that road. So there, there might be some found money.
Yeah.
You know, but I, I'm not sure what that will be valued at or how we'll negotiate that. But that, that is also, just putting it on your minds because this agency will have to think about that.
Well, in anticipation of, I don't want to put my city council on, hat on here, but in anticipation of what the city council, the city council's gonna have to authorize to pay back to the urban renewal agency for community park, because that was over expended. That was budgeted 420, and it was 700 and some thousand dollars. I assume 300 and some thousand from the city budget over to urban renewal.
You're absolutely right. We still have supplemental budgets to do at the end of '23. And so the, those numbers could change, but that's just based off what I had today.
Right.
Any other questions? That was all I had.
Any other questions for Eric?
Nope, great job, Eric. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Well, if there's no other questions, that is the end of our agenda except for an adjournment. I just wanted to thank Eric for the report tonight.
My pleasure.
Good information.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second?
Stay here all night, otherwise. It's been moved, it's been seconded.
All in favor?
All in favor. All in favor? Any opposed? Good night, Camby, have a good evening.